No, it is.
A call to order. The meeting of the Elwin City Area School District today is Thursday, November 12th. I apologize for the delay in getting started. We were meeting for an executive session for personnel matters. So we'll have a local call. Mr. Zaro.
Mr. Mizelli.
Here.
Mr. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Guardia.
Here.
Mrs. Grossman. Mr. Mallo.
Here.
Mr. Newpower.
Here.
Mr. Pancera.
Here.
Mr. Trelli.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Marzano.
Here.
Mr. Mancini.
Here.
Mr. DeCaro.
Here.
Okay, if we could rise for a moment of solid meditation followed by a flag of allegiance. Flags of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the minutes within the package for board members. Look for a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Mr. Mizelli, second. Ms. Pancera. All in favor? Or opposed? Approved. Alright, we will start off by going to our student council representative for his report, Mr. Angelo Marzana.
This is the agenda for the senior high student council. This coming week, our fundraiser is our fundraising activity. We'll be selling chocolate-covered Oreos the week of the 60. I'm taking advantage of this. Our Christmas dance is also coming up. It is December 19th at the Conicone Sinc Country Club. Be a dinner and a dance, both included, for the same price. You are all invited to attend. If you have any interest, please contact Mr. Davis. Also, a former student of Lincoln High School is going on a mission trip to Uganda in June. We will be raising money to purchase school supplies to send with this student. See Mr. Davis if you're interested in that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Marzano. Any questions? Thank you very much. Alright, so we will now go to the visitors. And I know a lot of you are here for the presentation, but if anybody has any issues for the board, you can state your name and the issue. We'll start here in the front.
Good issue, sir. I got burned, sorry.
We're all here for the presentation. Okay, very good. Any of the visitors, any comments? What's that? Guys. Okay, well, that's great. We'll get, move on then. Superintendent's report. Mr. Mancini.
Couple of quick items. We have the musical starts tomorrow, 7:30 showtime Friday and Saturday. They 2:30 start, I'm sorry, 2 o'clock start on Sunday. The musical is Into the Woods. We have Thanksgiving vacation coming up, November 25th through the 30th. One other item. This month, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association recognizes school board members for their service above four years and beyond after the four years that they've served. I'd like to read a statement here about school board service. "The legacy of school board service is firmly embedded in the history of our nation and its commitment to public education. Pennsylvania, as one of the founding colonies of the United States, clearly established a concept of schooling in its first constitution in 1776. Later, the Free School Act of 1834 marked the first permanent state interest in public education and the birth of the locally-elected school board. School directors today have a challenging job in our complex society, giving more and more of their personal time to this non-paid volunteer effort. Since 1983, Pennsylvania School Boards Association has been recognizing the contributions of dedicated local school directors with long-term service. School directors are first recognized when they reach eight years of service, and again every four years thereafter, through the honor roll of school board service. The honor roll is the association's way of saying thank you to those individuals who exemplify leadership and statesmanship, giving unselfishly their time and talents to the future of our public schools and putting something back into their local communities through the guidance in the education of youth." We have four members that will be getting a certificate today. Mr. Stevenson for eight years of service. Jennifer Grossman for eight years of service. Michael Newpower for eight years of service. And Mr. Leroy Cortez for 12 years of service. Just wanted to thank you for your years of service here in the Elwin City Area School District School Board. I'd like to now turn it over to Mr. Keely, who's gonna introduce our student presentation for tonight. So, Keely.
Good evening, if you've attended any board meetings in the last six months, I'm sure you've heard me talk about the Maker Space, which we've turned into the Wolverine Workshop. I am very excited and pleased to introduce Mr. Scott Hudson-Fan. He is the Wolverine Workshop teacher out of Perry. And I think I count seven of our best and our brightest fourth-grade students who are here to lead the presentation. I want to commend them for their outstanding behavior tonight during this meeting, and I can't wait to see what they have to say to you. So without much further ado, we're gonna turn over to Mr. Hudson-Fan and my fourth graders.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We have a Google Slide presentation to kind of help us stay on track and make sure we don't miss anything. First of all, thank you very much for having us. We're very excited and very, students are very excited about what they're doing. I had to kind of, careful selections. Wouldn't we go down just to the group we have? Like if had, we could have built a room, these are students wanting to know what they're doing, in the Wolverine Workshop. So I guess I'll kind of get things started. So Wolverine Workshop, we're Perry, Wolverine intermediate. What goes on? I know you guys heard a lot about what's gonna, what's gonna happen to grants, the assembly, building it up, what we're trying to do there. So, I could, I could tell you, I know Mr. Keely has shared some information with you too, about what's going on there. But I figure a firsthand report from the actual participants is probably a lot more impactful than anything any of us could say. So with that, I think we're gonna start with Matthew.
Well, before we start, I would just like to thank all the lady and gentlemen for giving us your time. The engineering design process is the process that we use to build, make, design, and then prototype it, and then make it better.
Okay, who are you again?
Hi, my name is Brayden, and the first step of the engineering design process is to ask and identify the problem. And this, and the, and ask and identify the problem. It is, what is the challenge? What do we know about this already? What have we or others done to solve problems like this one? What are my constraints? A constraint is the limits or rules that we have.
Thanks, Brayden. Is this one Evan?
This was Evan's.
Okay.
Yeah, dude. A magic or brainstorm. Whenever you do this, you think of an idea, and you make it out on paper. The best way to do this is by writing down the materials that you'll need, and then you build it after you get the supplies that you'll need.
Can I work in your group? Come up with ideas.
Logan?
Our next step is to design and plan. What it means is like, you draw, you draw a diagram, list the materials we will need, and each specific, include measurements when possible, and make a list of the steps we will follow.
Next, you create, which is to build it and make a prototype. You, whenever you create and build it, you follow your plan, collaborate with your team, make a working model of your design. And a prototype is just a first model of something from which other forms are developed or copied, and then you just try it out.
Hi, my name is Kaylee, and I will be talking about the improve and testing about QI. First, we ask the question, does the solution work? And then we ask the question, what can I do to make it better? And we make changes to improve it.
Hi, I'm Zoe. And number one, you explain your solution, and then you discuss the changes and improvements you made along the way. And then what you did, learn from solutions that did not work.
So how have we done this? So they, these are the steps we've been kind of working for every challenge, every project we did since the beginning of the year. So we're gonna share some of the projects that we have done. A short version, kind of cycle through. Brayden, Brayden, you're gonna talk about the first one, right?
On the very first day of the Wolverine Workshop, we did the marshmallow challenge. To do the marshmallow challenge, we used spaghetti sticks, tape, string, and marshmallows. And whoever's marshmallow is the highest wins.
A lot of trial and error, a lot of design revisions in there. It was a pretty good process to witness. Second one, Logan.
On our second day of the Wolverine Workshop, we had the paper airplane challenge. It's when we make our own paper airplanes out of popsicle sticks and paper. And paper cups. We have to see when, like, how far we can put our airplane.
For this one time, or would we try a couple times?
We try a couple times.
Or make improvements, design and find our problems. Alright, thanks, Logan.
On the third day of Wolverine Workshop, we worked with Sparrows. And we were, we were learning how to program it by changing its color, learning how to drive it, and we had like the continents taped onto the floor. So it was sort of like we were learning about the map and having fun at the same time by learning the continents and doing, having fun with it.
Alright, here's a big one. There's kind of a good bit of time with TinkerCad. Alright, so I'll let you guess. We did, well, I think we're just gonna kind of talk what we have up here. We were, we were there, can we do a live demonstration? Can we build something during the board reading? But I think, I'm seeing if we're able to just kind of, kind of talk about what we did and how you use the program. Alright, you wanna start off, Matt?
Well, in TinkerCad, you come up with any 3D thing you want to make. Or it could be a 2D shape. You build it, you think, actually, first you gotta think of it. Then you gotta go under the designs on the side to find out what shapes you need this design. Then you pull them out and drag them, and then adjust them to the perfect size you need and perfect place. And then you're fit, then you have to do it, each and every single piece that you use.
And then, after, after making these, you can send it to, this was a friend, we can make it off of the 3D picture, which will be 3D lines that you can use.
We have some examples of some of the 3D projects that they've made.
While they're getting those, I'll interject. Their ability to manipulate this TinkerCad on Chromebook is way beyond what I thought they were gonna be able to do, and it's the middle of November. They have, they have embraced it, and they really got a great hold of it, and it's amazing to see nine, eight, nine-year-old kids doing this as well as they're doing it.
Lot of 3D, a lot of manipulation, it's, it's pretty good. You see, Brayden's got some of the white supportive membrane on. You guys wanna pass them down? Come on, Brayden, come on around. Come on the chair. The white material is this assortment, support membrane on the 3D printer, because it's additive printing, it prints one layer at a time, seven thousands of minutes, and just every time. So that support helps, helps hold up the printer. And then that's water soluble, so we'll put it in the parts wash once it's done, and we'll have our, our 3D object exactly as it designed up there. There's some learning curve with that too. I mean, it's, it's, the 3D printer's new to us, at Perry, new to the district. So you'll see Logan's robot ended up in, kind of in pieces. We now know that when we're assembling him, we've gotta make sure that there's, those blocks are fully embedded within each other, otherwise we get the transformer robot there.
That's another thing we've talked about a lot too. A lot of this is, you fail a lot of times, but you learn so much when you do it wrong. That's such a big part of the process, and that's something that we don't, we don't allow our kids to do that enough, and doing that, you learn so much more than getting it right.
And they're ready, they wanna come back and keep hitting it. They wanna keep, let's try it again, gonna push something else, moving something else. So I mean, that perseverance is really coming through, I think, in other classes too.
Um, you can, and one of the parts about it is if you don't like what you've made or wanna get rid of something, you can delete it off there so it's not there anymore. And then you can also group it, so that way you can't make it, you can't take them apart when you group it. So if it's grouped together, you can't take it apart, it'll stick together. And if you choose a color for it, like, it has colors you can use, if you choose a color, it all goes to that one color.
They're, they're getting deeper and deeper into the manipulation and control of other community drafting. This is just an entry-level program. I think they're ready for something a little more deep down too. But it's, it's impressive learning curve, I'll put it that way, because coming up and getting on it. What else do we do in there? I guess we'll keep letting the 3D, 3D objects come around. They'll find their way back up to the round table and, and again. Evan. Alright, Brayden, we're gonna talk about circuits. What are the other projects we did?
We did circuits, and, um, we had like these boards and a whole bunch of wires, and we had batteries, and a whole bunch of light bulbs and, and what we had to do is, there were instructions on a piece of paper, and we had to follow in the, the instructions so we could, um, build the circuit.
Coming in, our, our fourth graders really weren't sat up on electrical circuits and how everything went together, so we kind of asked the questions, how does work? How do, how do we make a light bulb come on? So we kind of threw the parts out, and we were like, alright, how do we do this? So, kind of exploring and, and working to get that, figure out that, that component, how that all fits together, and trying it out. And these ones, we had some time a little bit ago, so we said, let's make some new circuits so we can show what we've learned tonight. Alright, let's keep going, guys. What's the next one? Cardboard is, I think Eric's gonna take some of that one.
The Global Cardboard Challenge was the second game in Los Angeles, named Hame, was working and his dad, he was art of art school, and one day he got really bored, so he made a cardboard arcade game. And based off that, he made a horse pit. And one day a producer came in to buy a handle for his car, and he decided that he would get a lot of people to come and play his games. And that's what started the Global Cardboard Challenge. Someone had been trying to make a Global Cardboard Challenge where it had to fit on half the table. And we had, our materials were cardboard, tape, markers, and scissors. And it was by far my favorite because it taught so much about the engineering design process, and we had so much fun with it.
Thank you, Erica. And I was saying, here's, here's one example of the arcade games kids made. Evan, who's actually not here tonight, but it's a skee ball game. But just watching the process that they use to figure out how they're gonna get the right ball in the right spot, and how they're gonna make the ball turn, and the sizes and the challenges. First one was too easy, so they had to add some obstacles. But watching that progression, you know, over the course of an hour or two, it was just great to see balls. The picture on the bottom right there is the last part of the design process, and sharing out. I, I was so out of the class and beside myself watching the presentation and the participation that every student had. The pride, they worked through their process, and then everyone else excited to see what they've done and try and learn from that too. It's a great class effort, we're a student driven, so it was, it was a great, huge success. Can't wait till next year. Alright, some other projects so far. Kaylee? We've got a whole list, I mean, we've had a busy year so far.
Well, there are some other projects we have done. The seed drop challenge was one of my favorites. I like that we used, like, paper, a paperclip for a seed, and we put other stuff on it to make it go farther out, to see how far a seed will fly, like, yeah. And the better bird feeder is what we're doing now in the Wolverine Workshop, and we use recycled materials to make it.
So, kind of with these two, they evolved high into classroom material. Like, our science teacher, Shear, was doing a lesson on seeds and reproduction plants, so we took that one step further into the workshop to tie in a, well, she's first, how do we, how do we, how do we grow? So we kind of took that one further, a little more further into the workshop.
The take apart days was where third grade took apart some like old computers and stuff and see how they worked. And like, like all the batteries and boards, and see how they could be put together and make a computer.
So, still more yet to come. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna keep tying in the classroom content with the workshop, trying to really just pull that overlap and reinforce that way. We've got the R code coming up, that's with Mr. Scott, who is staying up at the high school group, we're gonna participate in the R code in December, so it's gonna be a huge event. Video production, haven't really gotten into the, that yet, but there's already the inquiries about the, you know, we got the Hartman news, what about Perry? So, I don't wanna bite off more than I can chew, but you know, that's something we're gonna start exploring, you know, for around in the year. Take apart is on a new, again, kind of with the fourth grade, giving them their chance to kind of explore into that, how electronics work. We've got 2D equipment we haven't really even gotten into yet. The Sphero obstacle course challenge, Sphero is like, they're a remote-controlled or programmable robot ball, so we got a little taste of it, but it's, it's all computer programming and, and it's kind of programming how to, you know, not be getting obstacle course. So we got the building side and the programming side. We've got sewing machines, we're gonna be exploring. A big one coming up is another overlap with the computer, computer classes, is the Hummingbird robotics kits we have and scratch programming. Mr. Scott just started to scratch programming now, just to kind of get into, like, actually, we're gonna build a robot, and we're gonna program it to do things, so I'm pretty excited about that coming up. I haven't seen it yet, I'm new, my first season, first year here, but I guess there's the annual roller coaster challenge at Perry's, so there's some head nods there, so it's a fourth grade build that we're pretty excited about. I think we can generate some great things from that, from the Wolverine Workshop. And then I'd like to just meet in the 2016 Maker Fair, that's a big maker space, a big creative venue, and share, share all the things we've done, or some of the things we've done. So what happens next? We're gonna continue to be student-interest driven. Like, right now, it's still, I'm facilitating, and the classroom is pretty much doing the same thing. We wanna get to where, you know, where their interests are, so if we're gonna listen to the TinkerCad programs, and have a group focused on that. If we're gonna listen to more electronic programs, and take that to the next level and really enrich the individual students on their, on what they wanna work with. Kind of with enrichment as well. We got time to kind of have smaller groups come in to dive deeper into the workshop. That's something I'd like to see. We've got some gates, gates of students coming down from Hartman now, you know, just that kind of thing, like, open program. Community, you know, keep, alright. Showcase what we've done. Maybe have community day, or an open house or a theme night down at Perry, just to kind of share, share what's going on in the Wolverine Workshop. With that, I need to have copies of our Wolverine Week, and kind of keeping the parents in the loop of what we're working on, to keep that going too. And then continuation, you know? We're gonna keep that theme, theme going all the way, keep it going. There's a good buzz with the kids here, they're excited about us, we're gonna keep that going, you know, all the way to teacher club. Alright, now this is a big science thing, it's not me, but you can read it, it's really building that practice, is becoming familiar with problem solving and working a process, and becoming, each student gets their own process that they know that they can use to solve any problem. It's not just figuring out electronics, or circuits, or TinkerCad, it's applying that strategy to other things in life, and that developing that perseverance and that willingness to try. So, a couple, I, guys, these, these questions came from the group. What does the Wolverine Workshop make you do when you wanna grow up? That was Erica's, I think, right? Was that, sorry, sorry. What is it, you know, what do you wanna do with this knowledge that you're learning?
Well, in third grade, I started to mess around and tinker with some stuff, and I decided I wanted to be an inventor. When the first day I walked in the Wolverine Workshop, I knew that this would definitely help me become an inventor, and it has. It's really taught me some ideas and what I should learn when I come, grow, and grow and become an inventor.
So, that's a, you know, that's kind of the question too, how has the Wolverine Workshop helped you? Again, these were questions that we were kind of getting together, like, what do we, how do we wanna bring this to a close tonight? And these are questions that our, our inventors, our tinkers came up with to ask themselves and their classmates, and you guys as well. So, what questions do you have?
You guys having fun?
Yeah.
Learning along the way too?
Yeah.
How often do you guys use the Wolverine Workshop?
Usually, once or twice a week.
Yeah. The highest score is twice a week for a classroom.
Twice a week. Do you would like to use it more often?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to go there every day, actually.
We usually go there on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
We usually go on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Wednesdays and Thursdays.
So, we were there today.
I was too. We were also too. How, how long are you there?
About an hour. Our whole science class.
Yeah, for us, it's just the whole science class.
Yeah.
Can we bring in some examples? It's like, we, we initially, it was like, oh, we're gonna have like an exposition of all the things we've done. It's more just kind of to give you guys a taste of some of the things that you'll see in the Wolverine Workshop. It, so it gets, gets a bit messy sometimes, but it's okay, it's all work, work in progress. I guess I have one other question about fifth grade, I think.
We'll see it all together.
Will you consider?
Will you consider letting us?
Making a Wolverine Workshop for fifth grade?
It's just so much fun, and I, I'd love to have it.
In Hartman.
Yeah, in Hartman, while, while I'm going through my grades, I'd like to be in the Wolverine Workshop, because it's just, it's so much fun to be there.
And it's also educational.
That's all, yeah. Thank you very much for your time, guys. Great job.
I'm so proud of these guys to see this idea come to fruition, and to just, I wanted you to see so bad the excitement they bring, and believe me, they kept it together really well in here, but when you get 20 like this in a room with all the tinkering and all that happening, it doesn't sound like school, like when you were in school, I can promise you that, but my goodness, the things they're doing are so different and so advanced, and it's, I see it, and it's hard to digest sometimes, because they are just...
I see it and it's hard to digest sometimes because they are just so advanced in their thought. So I'm proud of you guys, thanks for coming tonight. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect you to stay too much longer, so if you guys wanna go, you are dismissed for sure, okay? Thank you.
I'm gonna sing for you.
Mommy, how did I?
Thanks.
Dude, make it spin.
I remember you building that cast.
Yeah, I remember you helping, 'cause I wonder if it finished.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
We're not, we're not doing anything.
Yeah, I'll give her, I'll give everything to her.
Thank you.
All you do is give.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, alright.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Alright, that's a hard act to follow, but Matt, you have to follow that act. So we'll have our revenue and finance report. Mr. Morello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number eight on the revenue and finance is the general fund treasurer's report. In your folder is the general fund treasurer's report as of September 30th, 2015. Summary of accounts is as follows. West Banko bank checking account, one hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. PLGIT, ten thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. PSBLAF, one thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. PA Invest, three hundred seventy-eight dollars eighty-five cents. West Banko Public Investment, three million nine hundred ninety-six thousand thirty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. And West Banko Certificate of deposit, three million five hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and seven cents. For total cash and investments as of September 3rd, 2015, at seven million six hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. And I move that this general fund treasurer's report for September 2015 be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 10, capital reserve fund treasurer's report. In your folder is the capital reserve fund treasurer's report for October 2015. Total investments at October, at October 31st, 2015, were two thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars with nineteen thousand twenty-five dollars and twenty cents in the checking account for a total available balance of twenty-one thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and twenty cents. I move the capital reserve fund treasurer's report for October 2015 be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion approved?
Number 11, capital reserve fund accounts payable. In your folder is the capital reserve fund accounts payable report for November. It is concluded as check 1447, amounting to twelve thousand four hundred twenty dollars. I move the capital reserve fund accounts payable check be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion approved?
I'd also like to ask that the following reports be included in the minutes of this evening's meeting. As of June 30th, 2015, the audited cafeteria report, September 2015, the statement of revenue versus budget, the statement of expense versus budget, and the tax collection report, and as of October 31st, 2015, the investment report, the investment earnings, the athletic facility fund report, and the Howling Stadium Center report.
Okay, Mr. Zeroum, would you see the remaining part of the sequence minutes? Thank you.
Number 12, quarterly earned income report. In your folder is the quarterly earned income tax report as of September 30th, 2015. The total investments at October, at October 31st, 2015, were two thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars with nineteen thousand twenty-five dollars and twenty cents in the checking account for a total available balance of twenty-one thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and twenty cents. I move the capital reserve fund treasurer's report for October 2015 be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion approved?
Number 11, capital reserve fund accounts payable. In your folder is the capital reserve fund accounts payable report for November. It is concluded as check 1447, amounting to twelve thousand four hundred twenty dollars. I move the capital reserve fund accounts payable check be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion approved?
I'd also like to ask that the following reports be included in the minutes of this evening's meeting. As of June 30th, 2015, the audited cafeteria report, September 2015, the statement of revenue versus budget, the statement of expense versus budget, and the tax collection report, and as of October 31st, 2015, the investment report, the investment earnings, the athletic facility fund report, and the Howling Stadium Center report.
Okay, Mr. Zeroum, would you see the remaining part of the sequence minutes? Thank you.
Number 12, quarterly earned income report. In your folder is the quarterly earned income tax report as of September 30th, 2015. I move this report be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 13, board travel report. In your folder is a final expense report from Mr. Charlie's attendance at the P.A.S.A. PSBA School Leadership Conference. I move this report be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Gardner. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 14, homestead, farmstead application printing services agreement. In your folder is an order acknowledgement with InfoCon Corporation of P.A. providing for the printing and mailing of the cover letter, instructions, and homestead, farmstead application to those property owners that have not paid an application previously approved. The cost of this service is point three nine six per unit. Is that forty cents?
Yeah.
And a hundred ninety dollar post office delivery and data file import and conversion plus the cost of postage. I move the approve, be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Petrowe. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 15, tax and rev, tax and revenue anticipation note. Due to the ongoing state budget impasse, I move the administration be authorized to receive bids for a tax and revenue anticipation note utilizing the services of public financial management and Clark Hill LLC.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 16, flexible spending plan document. In your folder is an adoption agreement and approving resolution for the flexible spending plan document. The document has been modified due to the requirements of the Affordable Care Act. I move that this agreement and resolution be approved pending solicitor review and approval.
Second, Mr. Gardner. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 17, tax refund request. In your folder is a property tax refund calculation for Jeanine Jackson, 210 Kinley Street, L.A. City, based on a veteran's exemption. The amount due has been confirmed by the L.A. City Tax Collector. I move this refund be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes?
That's all I have tonight on revenue and finance, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Morello. We'll move to personnel and education. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number 18, winner coaches. In your folder is a list of coaches recommended by the athletic director for the 2015-2016 winter sports season with the addition of Mr. Darren Morello as ninth grade boys' basketball coach and Mr. Pegby as seventh and eighth grade basketball coach.
Second, Mr. Cortez.
Roll call.
Okay, any questions before roll call? Okay, roll call, Mr. Zeroum.
Mr. Vazali.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Morello.
Mr. Stain.
Mr. Newpower.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrowe.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Number 19, substitute list. In your folder is a list of substitute non-professional cafeteria personnel for the 2015-2016 school year. I move the list be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 20, EAEA contract. In your folder is a copy of the collective bargaining agreement between the district and the EAEA for 2015-2016 through 2019-20 school year. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? I roll call vote, Mr. Zeroum.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Morello.
Mr. Stain.
Mr. Newpower.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrowe.
Now.
Mr. Vazali.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Number 21, Midwestern Intermediate Unit Four. I move that Renee Petrowe be nominated for the open seat on the Midwestern Intermediate Unit Four Board of Directors.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 22, expulsion stipulation agreement. The administration and parents have reached a stipulated agreement, expulsion number one, 2015-2016. The agreement calls for the student CM to be expelled from the L.A. City Area School District effective October 20th, 2015, for the remainder of the 2015-16 school year, at which point the student may petition for readmission. I move that the stipulation education and disposition and expulsion number one, 2015-2016, be accepted and approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Petrowe. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 23, long-term substitute. I move that Matthew Jedodvich be approved as a long-term substitute biology teacher for Mrs. Kim Frampton during her absence from the district.
Second, Mrs. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 24, student-teacher extension. I move that Teresa Nish to Slipper Rock University student be granted to extend her student teaching assignments in the district through January 8th, 2016, under the supervision of Mrs. Tina Emmer.
Second, Mr. Morello. Any questions? Mrs. Panzera.
Aunt takes this.
I think she's getting her special indication. She's gonna be, she'll have to add mine.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 25, extended season pay. I move that Mark Paul be paid extended season pay in the amount of one hundred dollars for additional week of the Voice Across Country season.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Number 26, fall coach appointed. I move that Craig Alpers be appointed as an assistant junior high football coach and that Tom Eckendorf be appointed as equipment, equipment manager retroactive to the start of the 2015 football season.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Move to properties and transportation. Mrs. Panzera.
Thank you, Mr. President. MIU for joint purchasing cooperative. In your folder is a joint purchasing agreement between the district and the Midwestern Intermediate Unit Four. I move that the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Morello. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Sale of old obsolete equipment. I move that the administration be authorized to compile a list of equipment that was formerly used in the surroundings class and advertise and receive bids for sales under the parameters of Board Policy 706.1.
Second, Mr. Gardner. Any questions?
Question.
Yes.
What if the bids received are under what the equipment is worth?
We can reject it there.
We can reject it, okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Facility request, A, Bill Garaway, Elwood City Magic Softball Program, request permission to use Lincoln High School girls and boys gym for softball practice on Saturday evenings in December 2015 and January, February 2016 from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I move that the facility request be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Lincoln HVAC change orders. In your folder are copies of change orders HC-1, HC-2, HC-3, and HC-4, and a summary of the additional work required for the HVAC upgrade project for Lincoln High School. The net cost of the four changes, change orders is five hundred seventy-four dollars. I move that the change orders be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Gardner. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Sure, sweet. Thank you. Mrs. Panzera. We'll go to student affairs and athletics. Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thirty-one field trip. A, Mr. John McWalters gifted teacher. Request permission to take approximately twenty to thirty students in grades five through twelve to Gettysburg National Military Park in Gettysburg, PA on Tuesday, November 24th, 2015. Group will travel by bus departing at 4:00 a.m. and returning at approximately 12:00 a.m. on Wednesday, November 25th, 2015. Trip will be funded by International Club for Student Grade Spotters. B, Mr. John McWalters and Ms. Erin Parkinson, request permission to take approximately twenty-four members of the book club and gifted students in grades seven through twelve to West Middlesex Junior Senior High School on Wednesday, January 13th, 2016, with a weather date of Wednesday, January 20th, 2016, for an academic competition. Group will travel by bus departing at 2:30 p.m. and return between 7:30 and 8:00 p.m., with the cost of the bus being paid for in the gifted budget. I move the field trip to be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Morello. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Thirty-two, athletic funds detail expenditure report. In your folder is the athletic fund detail expenditure report that reflects total expenditures of fifty-four thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars twenty-five cents for the month of October, 2015. I move the athletic fund detailed expenditure report be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera. Any questions?
Do you have a question?
Mrs. Petrowe.
I'm not even sure if it's true, but I was told that is the football team now being bussed over to practice?
There's a bu, they don't, we don't use a separate bus. They use a bus that goes over to the park and students want that, we offer that to them. We had, I think offhand, without knowing for sure, about a dozen junior high kids take advantage of that.
So there's not a separate bus?
No, they just get on the bus that's currently going over the park.
But I, is that an elementary bus? Because their high school isn't bused to the park.
Yeah, it's a bus that we run that goes through the park at some point. We set everything up with Elwood City Transit. It's not a separate bus. It's a bus that currently makes a run that way.
Okay, any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Thirty-three, quarterly activity report. In your folder is the activity quarterly report as of September 30th, 2015, that reflects opening balance of seventy-one thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars seventy-one cents. Expenses of five thousand one hundred sixty dollars fifty-six cents. Revenue is of five thousand one hundred fifty dollars seventy-five cents. Or ending balance of seventy-one thousand five hundred fifteen dollars and thirty cents. I move the quarterly activity report be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Gardner. Any questions?
One question.
Mr. Morello.
Is my math off or is, I mean, I see the difference between expenses and revenue for like ten dollars and the difference of ending balance of a hundred.
I think the difference would be in the accounts, receiving or accounts paid.
Okay. Alright, any other questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes? That's all I have tonight, Mr. President. I didn't say it was an athletic. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Recognition and Communication, Ms. Patrally.
Is there something over here?
Yeah, this one's mine. This must be Frank's. I don't know, Mary, go home.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. First one. This is from the Community Foundation, which is our breadbasket program we started in the district. It says, "On behalf of the Community Foundation, we are pleased to report the following donors have recently made contributions, and they add up to one hundred and thirty-five dollars." So, it just shows that there are, these are all from, one from a church, and the rest are from people in the community that are donating to the breadbasket, so thank you to all of them. Are we allowed to list their names?
I said her names, maybe I'll give the about.
Dennis and Carol Graff, Judith Johnson, Louis or Judith Welch, Lawrence and Cynthia Sorelli, and the Word Alive Ministries. I'd like to thank them all for the donations. We have a board commendation. The board and administration would like to recognize and thank the Newcastle Lodge, number fifty-one, the loyal order of the Moose for its five hundred dollar contribution to the district. The donation was given, recognizing that the ongoing budget impasse in Harrisburg is a hardship on the local school districts. The donation letter suggests using the money for lunches for needy children in the district. Therefore, the funds have been sent to the Community Foundation to be used for the weekend feeding program in the district. Wow, that's really wonderful. Have you sent something back out to them, thanking them?
I guess, no, let her go.
Thank you, that's wonderful. The next one is from Mr. Keely, Principal of Hartman and Perry. Officer Rob Magnifico visited Hartman Elementary School on November 3rd. He delivered an anti-cybercrime message to all of our fifth and sixth grade students. The mature message warns students of the dangers associated with the electronic communications and social media. Mr. Keely and the Hartman staff are very grateful to Officer Magnifico and the Elwood City Police Department for their commitment to our students. The second commendation we'd like to make is to Hayden Slade, a Hartman fifth grade student who participated in an on-sense competition in October and went undefeated. Last year, Hayden qualified for and competed in the National Academic Game League of America competition. He is well on his way to qualifying again. Congratulations to Hayden for this accomplishment and to his continued excellence in competitions. Third, Mrs. Ashley Igliotti, the school counselor for Perry and Hartman, organized Career Day for both schools on Friday, October 9th. The event featured more than thirty community members who volunteered to share information about their careers. The students were very interested, and the event was a great success. Thank you, and congratulations to Mrs. Igliotti for pulling this great event together for our kids. And the fourth one is, on October 30th, students at Perry and Hartman were treated to a Halloween party organized and sponsored by the ECEPTO. Students at Hartman got to see and loved a magic show in the gymnasium, while Perry students were engaged in fun activities coordinated and executed by PTO volunteers. The PTO has also provided a snack and drink for the parties. The staff and I are very grateful to PTO for their dedication to our students and all they do, and for that, I thank them sincerely, Frank. One more. Congratulations to Lincoln Junior Billy Lott for recently competing in the PIAA State Cross Country Finals at Hershey Park. Billy has had another successful running season this fall. He's finished eighteenth overall in the WPIALA race at Cooper's Lake, qualifying him for the PIAA meet. Billy finished in the top half of the state in double A boys in Hershey. Congratulations to Billy and head coach Mark Hall. He does that very well. And that's all we have tonight, under recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Patrally. We'll go to New Business.
Mr. President, I have two items on your new business resignation. Marsha Kazandovich has submitted her resignation as junior high student council sponsor effective immediately. Mr. Lath is recommending that Shelley Miller be appointed to fill the open position. Number two, volunteer wrestling coaches.
We need to vote on that, do them this.
I accept the resignation first.
All right, well, the first motion to accept the resignation made by Mr. Gardner, we have a second.
Second.
Ms. Patrally, any objections? Motion approved.
Number two, volunteer wrestling coaches.
Hold on, we gotta do the appoint. So, the second motion was to appoint Shelley Miller as the new junior high student council rep, seconded by Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
Volunteer wrestling coaches. Mr. Morella is recommending that Mike Sinclair and Ethan Bosch be appointed as volunteer wrestling coaches. Appointments were submitted on a timely manner by the head coach, but were inadvertently omitted from the committee meeting in general.
Second, Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections? Motion passes?
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. He was all over them. I had John writing the motion here, and you had it all covered. I forgot, you were on top of it. All right, anything else under New Business? Okay, well, then we'll go back to Visitors. Any comments from our visitors?
I just have a question about the breadbasket program. I wondered if I could get the contact information from that email. We just gave a hundred dollars to our account for that. It must not have been updated yet. And I just want to make sure that. I did hear that from an email from April Thelman, who was in charge of it, but this was probably maybe back from October. These donations were all on October. Was yours done in October? This is the last date, it looks like October 23rd.
Yeah, they cashed it at the end of October.
Yeah, so maybe this was the weekly.
Maybe the next.
I just want to make sure.
Get us in the right place. Well, thank PTO again.
Well, no, I just want to make sure it's going where.
Yes.
Any other comments from our visitors?
I have a question to ask. In the EAEA contract as approved, as adopted, is there any change in the base salaries?
There, it does include an increase to base salaries.
What are they?
To the salary schedule.
Sir?
An increase to the salary schedule.
Mr. Scorsima?
The, uh...
Because each individual step is different.
Yeah, it's tied to the, to the, uh, the step system, but the salary is limited to step movement only, with a total increase over the life of the agreement not exceeding two point nine percent.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Anything else from our visitors? Okay, anything else from the board? Nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Panzera, second. Mr. Gardner, meaning adjourned.